Nine o'clock with Carol and Forest Service. Better get my agenda out so I can follow along better.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Always glad to be here for our monthly update. I'll start out with our recreation and trails. Been busy getting all our campgrounds ready. We will have them all open by Memorial Day weekend. I think Slow Way probably is going to open today. We have hosts, we'll be all hosted. So folks from all over the country and they're glad that they've arrived before the price of fuel gets up any further because some of them come from South Carolina.
Oh, wow.
And, you know, quite a distance. Others are closer. We may have a little bit of a challenge at Quartz Flat trying to get people in and out of the campground with all the construction going on there. So we'll be working with Department of Transportation, trying to make that as seamless as possible. But it doesn't look really inviting to come in there. And people with the bigger RVs usually use that campground. And so we may see visitation down there just a little bit. Last year, that was busy.
Yeah, last time I was by there, even the ramps up there, they had them all, all the pavement tore out of there, so.
They do. So I've got to work with Heather and we'll be working with, they're going to have to do something to get that kind of cleaned up. And I think what they were going to do was they were even looking at changing the exit into the campground so that you, at least on the eastbound, that you would exit and get into the campground before you got to the construction site. But they're going to have to put a little access road or an apron in there to do that. And last time, I'm going to go down there today and just take another look. And then they were going to fence off the construction area so that people couldn't, you know, get in there. The other thing I'd say is we're going to have, I'd like to invite you to, is we're going to have for National Trails Day, a trails dedication out at Murphy Creek. And that will be June 5th at 10:00 in the morning. And we'll have a little program. And we're going to do a dedication to Roger Hurst at that. He was very instrumental in helping see that project through. So if you're available, we'd like to have you come. And a couple of other things is we've been finding, I think even more so this year than other years, is a lot of garbage, appliances, old furniture, and abandoned vehicles left on Forest, National Forest. And to get those vehicles, what we're told, working with our law enforcement, is that we have to impound those for 90 days and see if anybody comes to claim them before we can dispose of them.
Maybe you should have them run the VIN numbers, find out who the last owner was, give them a call and say, "Come get your old car, we'll charge you for littering." And then they'll either say, "Oh, no, I sold it to my Uncle Bob five years ago, go talk to him."
Be careful with the impounding deal. You'll end up with a mess like we got out there.
Yeah, I think we had some out there that you guys stored for a while and we got those out. But that's what we're running is where do we put them? And so we're going to probably put them at the St. Regis Works Center back in the boneyard because for a towing unit to store those, they want about $4,500 of, and we can't. Just really don't have budget to. Just about every week, we're hearing of one. And I had Dave Bridges, who has some property, you might recall, out there behind the mill and has been concerned about the Forest Service easement through his property. He came in yesterday to visit with me. Apparently, there's an abandoned travel trailer that is pulled off either on the shoulder of the road. And I've got to go look at that. And so, I mean, that's just, it's just weekly.
Yeah.
What we're finding. On the timber side of things, there's active hauling now going on on all the timber sales. And I brought you a map, just so you can see. We made these up and we're going to post these around the county in Superior, we'll have one at the office, we'll have one. I think we're going to put some, Rachel's going to take them and put them up in all of the communities so people can see them. Because with people with ATVs, people getting firewood, just out and about, we're finding that we're starting to get a lot of road traffic where we have haul traffic coming out. And so just trying to make people aware of where we have active hauling. And especially during the week, we're trying to discourage people from just general forest use. So I think they did a nice job on those. And we'll be getting those all up. So a lot of activity out there. The marking crews were still working on Cruzan. They got snowed out last winter and they got about 400 acres to mark. And then that sale will be bid in the third quarter. So we had to move it back a little bit. We're also working on patches, a blowdown that we found that's accessible and utilizing some of our local people. The Godens have Don Morkin and others that have come in asking about blowdown. We've worked with them and they've been pretty efficient in going and getting that cleaned up. So that we're, because there's been some nice trees that have blown down and they're just smaller pockets, but hate to see.
For their efforts to retrieve and clean it up, then they just do whatever they want with the product.
They can, and we're selling it to them. But, you know, it's a small amount, but it's working out real well for them. And they're getting some good work done there. On our silvicultural side, of course, we finished our tree planting, but the soil moisture was really dry. And so we're going to need quite a bit of rain or we could be, we could lose quite a few of the seedlings that we planted until they really get rooted and going. So we're going to be monitoring that. And then we're going to be moving into some thinning. We got a couple hundred acres of thinning that we're going to be doing. And our silvicultural people are also doing some more work up in Superior North because that's the next project that we're working on. So Carly's up there looking at those stands, seeing where she'd want to put units in, what kind of prescriptions. And we are seeing some pretty active dug fir beetle this spring. And if you stand at the Forest Service over there in the parking lot and you look at this face over here, you can see some red needle pockets of trees starting to pop up. And Carly's been in there, but that's just pretty typical of what she's seeing across the district is quite a lot of dug fir beetles starting to hit. And we don't know just how extensive that's going to be, but we're monitoring it. On the planning side of things, for Red Bull, you know, we had our resolution meeting that I talked about last time I was here with IFG was represented, AFRC with Tom Parton was represented, Montana Wilderness Association, and Wild Earth Guardians, and the Center for Biological Diversity were the people that were on the resolution meeting. And just some of the issues that were brought up, obviously, some want to see the two and a half mile section of the South Fork of the Little Joe Road closed, decommissioned, that was one issue that was brought up. Some want to see less road decommissioning just for the cost of doing decommissioning. Others wanted to see more. So, you know, that's the balance that we try to work with. We have all sides.
And what's the argument for, because it really is expensive to decommission an entire road and, you know, retain the slope, et cetera, versus just gating it in case? I mean, they really do kind of self-close. I mean, it might take 15 or 25 years. But, man, those trees, there's a road up behind my place that you can't even tell there was a road there now. There's just trees everywhere, other than there's a little flat bench where the road once upon was.
Yeah, you still have the road.
Yeah, but, I mean, it just, it just seems so expensive to try to rip and tear and slope and contour when it's not necessary, especially when animals continue to use it. Or if you had a fire, you could get in there and access it and quick mow down a little alder brush or whatever, you know, depending on the time period when you need to get in there. I don't understand that, why they like to waste money like that.
It is, it is expensive to do a full contour. And in the Red Bull project for fisheries and hydrology, we do have quite a few miles of road that will be decommissioned. Some with just a gate or a barrier and let naturally decommission like you're talking about, Roman. There's others that will be fully recontoured. So the people at the resolution meeting, you had both sides represented. Some wanted less decommissioning due to the cost. Others wanted to see more, so.
Well, you would think that there would be more sediment damage decommissioning it than and just leave it.
Well, the whole sediment thing, we know.
We probably aren't telling you anything that you don't know, huh?
Yeah, the very same fishing game biologist that was saying that the South Fork of the Joe puts too much sediment into the creek from logging trucks is the same one who's allowing, agrees with a full-blown, a full-blown boat ramp, boat launch, being put in the floodplain on the Clark Fork River with, well, you were on that field trip. Are you the same guy? What are you talking out both sides of your mouth? What's going on here?
Cutting down a half a dozen cottonwood trees.
Yeah.
So another item that, you know, seems to be of concern to folks is we have an alternative to do commercial harvest in the Marble Point Inventoid Roadless area. And that would be in that area up behind where Campbell's Mink Ranch is, would be building, because in the Inventoid Road, unless you can't build any new road, it would only be using existing road or accessing through private ground, which we've asked the private. And it was basically the people with the private that in our scoping and public meetings that ask us to do some treatment next to their private property. And we do have in the resolution meeting, the Inventoid Roadless areas will be an area that is of concern for some people and groups. So that would be the other one.
Can I ask you something on that, Carol? How did that ever become inventoried roadless?
When there's roads already there.
Well, that was, you know, it goes back to.
Long time ago.
A long time ago in that rare too. And even though there was harvest in there. And that is our, the reason that we have chosen to do some commercial treatment in there is we're saying that the portion that we're going to do that treatment, it has had previous units in there. And we're saying that that portion has been substantially altered. And so it doesn't really have the same characteristics of a Inventoid Roadless area like the Ward Peak, for instance, that's, you know, doesn't have any of that. So we'll see where we go, but that is an area that we are being.
I always wondered that, how could that could cost your 500 yards from somebody's house? That's inventoried road.
So those are kind of, and then some of the other concerns is we have in Red Bull, quite a few units where we're going to do regeneration harvest. And those are units that Carly, when she did the stand reconnaissance, she found a lot of root disease, already down timber from the dug fir, the lodgepole. And really, the only way that she feels to clean those stands up is you have to cut pretty heavily in there and you have to change the stand composition back to large ponderosa pine or something that the dug fir is, has got between root rot and with the bark beetle in there. We're going to lose in those stands. We've already lost some dug fir and it's going to be just like the lodgepole pine that we've lost. So we're going to have heavier cutting in there. It's not a clear cut, but it would be heavier cutting. And that is another area of concern for some people. So we're working through that. On the fire end, you know, we've pretty much finished our burning. We might have another unit or two, activity unit to do. But we got a lot of burning done this spring. Been pretty successful with that in between wind and.
Snow.
Snow and whatnot. We have three people down on the Gila National Forest in New Mexico, and I think they're returning today. So we'll have everybody pretty much back home. Just working on our fire preparedness for the month of June. They'll be doing some project work and different things, getting ready for fire season. And Jim Ward just has sent out information that we will not be issuing any burn permits after June 1st. So it'll probably be something in the paper on that. And I think he said Sanders County was going to, or the Plains District was going to follow suit with the same. On the engineering side of things, we got blading and brushing contracts all going. Also doing a lot of road building in the timber sales up here in Deep Jam. They're building road and they're continuing to build some road up in Tamarack to get into some of those units off of the Bonneville Power Road. So really busy there. And Nate Kegel had one of the regional engineers out here a couple of weeks ago and went up in Deep Jam and looked at some of the new road construction that the contractors had built and was really pleased. Took some pictures and I got a nice letter of compliments to the contractors that built the road and also the engineers, Mike Frohly and Jared Coscola, that did the design work. That it's in steep country, but the road was really well-designed and well-constructed, so that was good to hear. I think last time I was here, you remember, Dwayne, I was talking about the state requested a meeting with us concerning the blading on the Tamarack Creek Road with that portion that goes through the state ground. I've made contact with them and the date for that is going to be June 3rd at 10:00. They want to meet at the Tamarack Turnoff. And so would you let Jason know on that? If he could be present and I'll have our engineers, Mike Frohly or somebody with me as well. They were concerned about when we were blading, there was some side casting of material that was getting into the, to the stream or sediment into the stream up there. Asked us to have a meeting. On the lands side of things, I know we've been talking about the silver exploration project. We did get that project through Fish and Wildlife Service for consultation and they have approved it. And so we're working with the proponents of that project and they're trying to line up a core driller to do their silver exploration. We also have had a lot of requests for road access into isolated parcels. And that also had to go before Fish and Wildlife Service. And we had five requests in and we got approval for four of them. The other one, which is up in an isolated parcel way up in Trout Creek, and they just needed more information on that project. So the other thing in lands is we've been looking at, this started way back when Tanya Brummett was ranger here on conveyance of the Quartz Guard Station. And those things take a long time. But I have a meeting next Tuesday to get an update on where are we with conveyance of that piece of property. So I'll have some information probably next month to tell you about. We've had a number of people, even in the county, that have had interest when that becomes available. And I think how they'll do that, it'll probably be an internet auction when it's actually placed in conveyance. And so it'll be open to the public, say, for a set amount of days to, and they'll have a minimum bid that they'll accept and then it will go from there. But where it is on the schedule, I'll be finding out Tuesday. So that's kind of what I know.
I got one question or comment. My wife and I loaded up the dogs last weekend and went out on the river trail. And the one that goes up to 14 Mile. First thing I seen, now, some of that stayed in there, I realize.
Yes.
But we did come across the marker that said this behind this sign as Forest Service. Lot of beetle kill out there. And easily reached from that power line road that goes out to the power line.
Okay, I don't know if our crews have been in there or not, but okay.
And then on that trail out there, maybe a mile, is a big old blowdown red fir, about that big around. And the root wad is right across the, right across the trail. They've been getting their bikes across it, but it's where it did go down, it's straight up and down. And I don't know if anything can be done with that.
Is that right on that, where you're right on that narrow, steep spot?
Yeah.
Where you're right.
Yeah.
That, we've had several in there that have done that.
It's probably that big around. The root wad's almost in the trail, not quite. But they've been pushing their bikes across it, but we stopped and turned around. I didn't want to have one of my dogs tumble down down that log and into the river. But I don't know if anything can be done with that. If it can be cut out of there or cut in half where you can have a step across there, I don't know.
We'll get some of our better sawyers in there to look that. I'm glad you mentioned that, Dwayne. And how far from the trailhead would you?
Maybe a mile.
About a mile in.
It isn't any further than that because we just walked out to it and turned back around and it might not even be quite a mile.
Because almost every year, the backcountry horsemen from Mission Valley up there out of Ronan.
I don't think they've been in there this year though.
They usually come in June and cut that trail out. And I'm always concerned because if you get a lineup of horses and they'll have like a pack mule behind them with their saw boxes and you have to stop them on that narrow piece of trail to work on something, and it'd be real easy to have a horse go off there.
Bring the whole team down.
Yeah, it isn't very wide right there and then it's so steep. And that's why we turned around. But it's very visible all around, almost from the start of the trail. You can see, and like I say, some of that is state, you know, so I don't know if you could maybe look at Good Neighbor or what. But there, it's getting pretty bad there on the beetle. I said root rot, but I don't, you know, and they're dying one way or the other.
Okay, it's either root rot or got some beetles in it. Thank you for letting me.
It might mainly the fur, Dwayne, up there that dying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're really, that part of that hillside doesn't have too much pine on it.
So when you see an area, say like this face, this, what can you do about, you know? I mean, because that wouldn't be that hard to log up there because there is that road that comes around right at the top of there. I mean, it was already in the Cedar Tom project and.
I'm going to have Carly take a look at that and really, you know, hike in there and see how extensive she thinks it is. Because I can, when the light's just right, I can stand in the parking lot and I can see some red clusters.
Yeah, I noticed it the other day. I was looking up there and could, you know, see a lot of fur that's dying. And I was thinking, God, this needs to be done before it gets any worse.
So, but I, Carly tells me we probably got quite a few spots like that on the district that she's trying to evaluate, where's our worst?
Right, yeah.
And so it's coming. Especially if we have a really hot, dry summer would be even worse. Okay, Tammy, it's all yours.
Thanks. First, I wanted to introduce myself and say good morning. I'm Tammy Fletcher. I am just filling in for Eric Thomasick for a few months while he is doing another detail assignment right now. So he's working out of the Denver office, but he will be back July 6th. So until then, I'm filling in, which I'm happy to do because I've been 24 years with the federal government and I actually live in Houston. So I usually work in the regional office. I manage the wildlife program for the northern region for the Forest Service. But I've always wanted the opportunity to have this experience in nine miles right in my backyard. And so I'm happy to be there. So I'm filling in for Eric as a nine mile district ranger for a few months. And I've got to already work with Roman a little bit on some fun paperwork. But anyway, just wanted to say good morning. This is my first time here and I'll do my best to let you guys know what's going on. You know, I'm not going to know it as well as definitely Carol or Eric, but my staff helped me get ready to share some information for you. So I'll start with recreation as well. You know, we have a couple of things going on with Iowa State University. They're working on the North Fork Trail and they'll be out there June 21st. They'll be cleaning water bars and brush trails. And they'll also develop interpretive sign for the Clearwater Crossing. So that'll be great. That is, they're using a class to do that and that'll be in August when they're going to be out there developing that interpretive sign. So they're also, the West Fork Stock Bridge at Clearwater Crossing is scheduled to be installed this summer. So hopefully somewhere between July 15th and August 30th. So that'll be good to get that done. The RTP grant funded the MCC crew that's working to replace the Punchin on Straight Creek. And they're completing the tread work headed up to Chill Cook on August 3rd to the 10th. Let's see, Nine Mile also received a Trails Challenge funding. So they'll be doing some two Trails contracts. They'll be doing the North Fork Fish Creek and associated Trails and the West Fork Fish Creek and all the associated Trails there. I'm not sure when that will get advertised, but they'll be clearing and trailing and cleaning all those Trails in that area. Mountain Man Rendezvous is coming Memorial Day weekend. So that'll be fun and Somnail Gulch. Do you participate?
They've been doing that since like 1981. I remember as a kid, going, what are these guys? They all dress up like Lewis and Clark from the era. My boys get into that. I haven't, I just go up there and walk around. But some of the, they used to have a guy that was old-fashioned ferry or with a real belle or not, blacksmith. And he could make whatever for those guys, a knife or a spear or whatever. Pretty interesting. Wonder how that's going to go, Tammy. I don't know how the permitting thing works because since last year with COVID, more and more people, as you know, are getting out in that little meadow area where, I don't know if you've been up there, where the rendezvous is. People come up there all the time, like, I don't know, there they? And there's like five people camped out, three wall tents and a couple of camper trailers. And they're not together, they're just people that like to camp. So I'm thinking, what if there's five or six campers there when the rendezvous guys who have their permit and they're out houses and they're, are they going to have to like work around the present campers? Or do they have to like move since these guys have the? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I'm not really sure. You know, the fact that we permit it and they're up there, I'm sure. So when they get there and start unloading outhouses, the people might be like, I do not want to camp.
Oh, yeah.
Or maybe they get to join in the rendezvous, I don't know.
Because that never was an issue before because people, it was just, once in a blue moon, someone to go up there and just camp.
There are lots of people everywhere.
I have family that do that in Kansas. Boy, they get really into it. The beard's going, it's pretty exciting.
My mom's from Kansas, Colby, Kansas.
Oh, really? All mine's eastern.
Over by Lawrence or something? Over by Lawrence or something?
I'm just thinking, you know, like for outfitter camps where the outfitter pays for their camp, usually we post the dates that the outfitter is going to use that camp. And so it's open to the, for the public to use that camp. But during the days that the outfitter is going to use it because they've paid for it, then it has to be vacated.
I've got the same thing.
So if they're permitted, that might be something that you'd want to post.
Yeah.
That during these days, this is under permitted use. And really, people should be moved out of there.
See, I'll go into a little bit of our roads and engineering. You know, the Great American Outdoors Act, the Fish Creek Road resurfacing. Hopefully, the primary purpose of that project, you know, resurface the road with aggregate. And they'll do as much as they can with the funding that they have. And right now, it looks like they'll be able to get all the way to the intersection with West Fork of Fish Creek Road. So, of course, we're doing the work with an agreement with Mineral County. And we'll have the agreement in place this year. Construction will start in 2021, but most likely or most majority of it will be 2022 next year, so.
Christian game will cooperate with using the gravel source.
Oh, really? I had not heard that. So for, and that's the, our funding for GAO for '21. For '22, we did submit quite a few projects around here. The Great Burn Trails Project, the Clearwater Crossing, and West Fork Fish Creek Road upgrades. We haven't heard yet what all got funded, if we should hear any day. So we'll be excited to see what the GAO funds come in.
So is that work that will be done by the Forest Service Trail Crews? Or like you mentioned, Iowa University and stuff? Or how are you guys, are you guys having trouble getting workers? I guess is where I'm going. Do you have people to do that work?
Yeah, so they're trying to actually hire more people under that act or with those funds to help implement that. We can also use other agreements to bring in contractors to help us get those done as well. So we're trying to kind of get our workforce up a little bit, but not too much because when GAOA funds go away, then what do we do? But we're also trying to just maybe focus how we're going to get the contract work and streamline that process when the time comes to get them done.
I didn't know if you were even having trouble getting firefighters for the summer. We're having trouble getting workers, I didn't know.
Everybody, yeah.
Let's see. Pyramid Lumber has completed all the roadwork in the McEwen Peak area and has been working with two separate crews on the Stark Lookout Road and the roads above Sheridan Creek. They've been working up there for about two weeks now. They're constructing new roads off the Sheridan Creek Road and planning to complete all the roadwork for the sale by the spring, early summer. So, and I think you guys are aware of this, but we had to rebuild the road entrance on the east edge of the McEwen pit because the pit is shared between us and you guys. And we came up with a plan in the field last spring. Hopefully, you guys should be aware of that. So for, as part of that work, we went ahead and worked with Pyramid Lumber and closed a portion of, let's see, Stark Mountain Road, just up towards the, it's at milepost 6.4 at the junction of Road 518. So the upper part of Stark Mountain Road up to the lookout. And it's just because it was too hard to do the construction and worry about rocks falling down and the safety of people while they're up there reworking that road, reconstructing. So, but it's only closed Monday through Friday, and then it's open again on the weekends. Just so you guys are aware of that. And hopefully, we'll have all of that done by June 1st. Just to talk a little bit about our timbers, things that are going on. Sawmill Petty is the big one here, or that includes part of Mineral County. Just like Carol, we just recently went through objections with the same, similar people. We had Native Ecosystem Council object the project, Wild Earth Guardians, a private individual, Claudia Narcisco, and American Forest Resource Council. So where we're at on that, we listened to all the objections, a lot of issues with natural resources, roads, almost exact same things that Carol just described. So I won't go into too much detail. We also have an IRA inventory road, inventory roadless area on South Garden, and we're planning on doing work in there. So we, there are some concerns about that as well. So what we're doing is just trying to update our EA with the objection points and some of the comments we got and fill in some holes and gaps that we had. And we're waiting on the biological opinion from the Fish and Wildlife Service, but they're working on it now. So hopefully, it won't take too much longer. And that hopefully will be perfect timing with us fixing everything we got with the objections and comments we got and come out with a new decision, hopefully in the next month or two on Sawmill. So we're already working on a few timber sales associated with the Sawmill Petty. Just wanted to give you an update on that. So South Garden, we have, the strike team is working on the interior marking right now. And we are planning to sell that South Garden timber sale fourth quarter of this year.
You know where that one is, Tammy? What, when you say South Garden, what area is that?
I wish I could be more specific. It's.
Somewhere on the Petty Creek side, Edge Creek or Gus Creek, or something like that?
I honestly couldn't tell you.
Okay. But that's the monitor they use, huh, South Garden?
South Garden, I think that is that Petty Creek area right up behind where Carly, isn't that the one that Carly was helping on?
I don't know if Carly was helping with that.
I think she did some of the silicultural prescriptions for it. It's up off of Petty Creek there.
Okay.
Pretty sure.
So on both of those, Red Bull and the sales you're talking about, you have this objection process, and you named the groups that objected. So when that's resolved, or not resolved, whatever the case may be, can anybody else step in there? You know, there's a group in there in Missoula, we call them the Usual Suspects. And they file something on everything that happens on the forest. Can they, if you guys, if they're happy, if the groups you're working with are happy and we get the green light to go ahead with everything that we want, can somebody else step in there and stop it? I mean, like, they used to be, I thought that was kind of the purpose of the revamp and the appeals process. Can they still do that?
They have to have legal standing, Dwayne. And so like, all of the individuals or organizations that filed an objection, they had to have legal standing in order to file that objection. And so then, once the forest supervisor makes, once Carolyn makes her decision, if they're still not satisfied with it, they can file litigation. But another person that does not, has not had legal standing or hasn't went through that process, they could not.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, we're definitely trying to make them work with us and go through the process with us instead of just coming in at the border.
It's everybody's forest, you know, that's their first thing. It's our forest too, well, it is. So get your butt to the table. Let's hear what you got to say, you know. Those, several of those groups in Missoula never do show up, you know. Yet they're the first ones there with a court order. Can't do that, you know. Pretty frustrating.
Well, and you know, some of the ones that have filed objections were, at least for Red Bull, were never involved in any of our public meetings, field trips, or any of our working groups to help develop that project, unfortunately.
Well, hopefully, we'll get South Garden sold on the fourth quarter. The next one associated with Sawmill Petty is Sawmill. The strike team is interior marking right now. There's a little bit of trouble getting access in the spring. And so it's a little late. But they're still trying to cruise it and get the package together. It's going to be close whether we meet the fourth quarter deadline on that one. But we're working on it right now. Pepperd Corral is one that we have planned for fiscal year '22. The timber staff is starting the harvest unit layout. And they're hoping to complete all the field work this field season and put the contract together over the winter. It's planned for sale for fiscal year '22. So those are the three timber sales associated with Sawmill Petty. And hopefully, we'll get that decision signed soon and get working on it. As far as fuels go, fuels and fires, you know, we didn't get any window to burn the South Fork Fish Creek this spring, unfortunately. But once jamcracker timber sales go through, they can burn that area. They're getting prescriptions started on the Burdette area as, and hoping to be able to burn in that area as early as next spring. So there's a few areas that we're working on over here in this county. We're also going through the same thing with fire folks that Carol mentioned. We have some down in southern Arizona right now helping with them. They'll be back hopefully soon. They're in Nogales. So they're toasty, I'm sure, right now. We have our fire preparedness next week and trying to get everybody lined up and ready for the season. So something that we wanted you also to be aware of is Fire Restrictions website is down for some reason, and it's not going to work. So they're making a whole new website. It's called mtfireinfo.org, so.
Just in time for Jim Ward's No Burning After June 1. So you can find that out.
We always like to time things really well. Oh, another good thing, I just wanted to share with you. The Lolo National Forest is committing some money to work with USGS and some other partners. And we're hoping to fly LiDAR for all of Mineral County this year. And so that will be really great. That'll help us with, you know, there's seven projects going on in this area at different phases, but we'll have a lot better vegetation information and aerial, aerial pictures of this county soon. So about half of the region right now has got LiDAR on it. So we're still working on it and prioritizing areas. But it's exciting to hear that Mineral County is next up.
So that'll be able to measure like your forest inventory? Or what's the?
It really gives you detailed information of cover and density. And then also, it helps you see variations in past construction activities. Or what we've really been, it's really been useful in like Nine Mile when we were doing all this stuff with Trout Unlimited and all the old mining. You can see the layers and how they change the streams from these pictures are so detailed. So it's really been helping with designing projects and see where we have issues that are not noticeable from the ground or without extensive groundwork.
I am glad you brought that up, Tammy, because I was supposed to and I forgot about it. So thank you. One of the things, LiDAR is, it's expensive. It's so much an acre. And one of the things that the forest asked me, and I talked a little bit about it last time, you remember, Dwayne? And Andy Short was here. And he was quite interested in it from the planning side, asking if that would cover the private ground in Mineral County as well. And as far as I know, it would because when they fly that, they're not going to delineate out the private. And it is so accurate anymore. Andy thought that that would, I don't know just how he uses it from the planning shop. But from the Forest Service aspect, Mike Frawley tells me, like, for engineering and road locations, it would save a lot of ground truthing because LiDAR shows where the breaks are in the ground. And they could actually do some design without doing nearly as much field truthing. On the timber side of things, as far as logging systems, it would probably save in having field crews having to run profiles to find where the slope breaks are. Because LiDAR would show that, and it would be very accurate. So the forest is trying to find some partners to help with that. And IFG is going to partner with the, we got a commitment from them. And they wanted to know if Mineral County would be interested in partnering, if there would be any, even just a little bit of money that could come from the county. And I have also asked Bonneville Power if they would be interested. And I've made a contact with Bonneville. They have not committed yet. They want to know a little bit more what type of LiDAR we're using. And so Chris James, one of the program managers, asked if Mineral County would have any interest in coming in as a partner. It would help push it as a high priority in the region if we could show some partners.
Well, any idea what the cost would be?
I think they're looking at, what, Tammy, I've heard.
I really don't know what the total cost is. You have more history on that.
I think I saw something just the other day. Let me look on, it's, it's expensive. But any amount that would come in, I mean, even a small amount that could show as a partnership would help show the region that it would help bump it to a priority.
Yeah, like I mentioned, half of the region is done. And so everybody's kind of buying for the next year. And we're buying for Mineral County right now. And Lolo's willing to put some money to do that. And so that's what Carol's talking about.
One of the ways that Andy uses that, Carol, is the floodplain.
Okay.
So they redid the DNRC and.
FEMA.
FEMA redid the floodplain maps here for Mineral County. Took a bunch out down here. But right in the heart of St. Regis, we're in the floodway. And so they use LiDAR when they did that. Ron Warren and some surveyors are out there doing that on the ground now, surveying it again to make sure just if that's accurate. But that would be a good way to maybe solve that once and for all. The previous floodplain maps, people were told down there, Rick Jasper, for instance, with the Super 8, he was told what elevation to build his Super 8. State of Montana told him. And now that elevation has changed.
Okay.
You know, of course, this is after the fact, you know. So what do you do then? But I mean, that's, that's what he does use LiDAR for.
Here's what I have in an email that I got yesterday was, LiDAR can cost anywhere from $200 to $500 per square mile. Mineral County is roughly 1,222 square miles. Estimates for total cost based on that would be between $244,000 to $611,000, depending on, I guess, what type of LiDAR and different things. And they just said that IFG has, is open to partnering with us to acquire LiDAR for Mineral County. And they would like to have QL-1. And I don't have enough background to know what kind of LiDAR or what that means. But so, anyway, they ask if Mineral County would be interested in contributing anything. And I have talked to Bonneville Power to see if they would be willing. And if so, then we could show that we do have some partners.
I think we do.
What do you think, Buck?
Buying something.
How much skin in the game do we have to contribute?
I think any, anything contributed shows, shows a partnership and interest, so, you know.
I think Andy could use it further too. You know, and that isn't the only thing that he uses it for. Stream flows out of the side ranges and, you know, I mean, that, I'm sure all that's part of it too. And that's, I'm sure that's one of the interests of IFG too, to see what you've got there.
Yeah, for the cover and things. And as Andy said, LiDAR now is, you know, what he was saying last month when I was here is LiDAR is so accurate now compared to what it used to be.
On a different note, does either of you, maybe because you work in the Lolo, know where are things at with? There's two forest plans I'm sort of interested in. One is over the hill to Clearwater, and the other one is the Bittera. I think they're ahead of us too. We're trying to figure out what we might expect when our 1986 forest plan finally gets updated. And what's it looking like for the other forests, how it's moving forward? Have you heard any deadlines or dates of when those plans are supposed to be completed?
Nesper's Clearwater is still going through comments and things that they received. And their decision won't be signed. their decision won't be signed for I think six months. I think they're still working on it. The Bitterroot and the Lolo are the next up and they'll be combined when that does happen.
We're not gonna be combined now.
Not, not the, just the forest plan revisions are not? I heard that they were still gonna be.
Carolyn said we're, we're each going on our own. We were supposed to be combined and then the last I heard from Carolyn was that the Lolo will go on our own.
Do separate. I knew there was always gonna be two separate environmental impact statements written for each plan so, but maybe the timing is similar, but two different.
Probably. I mean, that's the last that Carolyn has said. They always talked earlier that the Lolo Bitterroot would be combined because they have combined a lot of forests, but she said the last from Carolyn was that we would not now. There will be either a, and Tammy correct me because you may know more, a Washington office or a regional team will come in and at least be doing, helping with some of the planning, the public meetings and certainly a lot of input from all of the districts and the district staffs because we're gonna know our data best. But there will be a planning team that will actually do a lot of the footwork as far as organizing the public meetings, conducting those, that sort of thing.
And we have so many plans nationwide that are due and we're having trouble getting them efficiently through. They seem to take a long time. So we're breaking the United States into three pods, kind of, and they'll have a separate planning team for each pod. So the, you know, of course, the Rocky Mountain Pod will take care of our area and so hopefully they'll be more efficient as far as the writing. They'll have the writing team and all that, but like Carol said, they'll use our local specialists to help them with the site specific information.
There's the man right there Carol talked to about the LiDAR.
Let's do it.
Hi Andy.
Hi.
Yeah, we were just talking about LiDAR and.
Oh.
And how, how that would, it would include uncertainly private ground because we wouldn't separate that out.
You have any idea on like cost, total cost of the, to the county or?
I don't, I think if we do it, I don't know how we'd separate because we got all those little private parcels and I think when they fly it.
And we only have 7% private land so we're hardly being LiDAR to anyway.
I mean, I can't see why we'd separate it out. But I have asked, I sent an email up just to clarify that to be sure, but.
Well, if Andy can use it, we'd be willing to say.
Yeah, I think.
Go, go for it and hopefully it's not an arm and a leg if, if it's being done anyhow.
Yeah, via, yeah, right, like is, is the juice worth the squeeze, right? Like yeah, how much is the? And just so everybody knows, we've talked about this before, but the floodplain mapping project, we, that whole, all the river quarters we've got, we have LiDAR mapping. That was part of that.
FEMA thing, yeah.
Yeah. And, and apparently all the surveyors are finding that it's super accurate, like within an inch.
Which is amazing.
Amazing, yeah. I mean, I, you know, that, that's typically if it's open, you know, non-timbered. So I don't know, I don't know when you get in the timber, how accurate they become at that point, but yeah, I guess, you know, it just comes down to cost, right?
I think, what did I just say? It was $200?
$200 to $500 a square mile.
Yeah, to do it is the cost rates that they've come up with.
And you guys are doing it, um, the timber sales and?
Yeah, for all of our management, like, you know, it would, the timber people would use it because they wouldn't have to do profiles. It would show the, for the logging systems, it would show slope break and engineering, it would save a lot of field time as far as knowing where those breaks are to, for road location. And the heritage, the archaeologists would save them a lot of field reconnaissance because it would show, well, just the landforms in there.
Any changes from past use?
Use, so be very useful for us.
Yeah, it's not, you know, it's not the highest priority I got, so.
Well, I guess what they're wondering is if, do we wanna be partners? They think we've had more publicity. Threw our name in there too. Isn't that what, kind of what you're thinking?
Mm-hmm.
Kinda I guess, I mean, we're, we're, we're interested, I mean, without finding out how much we'd have to fork out, but we can move ahead with, at least we're interested to.
Should we take it out of timber sale receipts?
There you go.
Non-applicable timber sales.
Well, I can at least say that county's interested in being a partner and then whatever financial contribution that, you know, they know we're, we're not a rich county by any means, but we have interest. And we'll see if Bonneville Power would kick in some money as well. And if they did, then we would have, we'd be able to show that we have three partners and that would certainly boost us for regional priority, I'm certain, to get it done.
We take it out of title brief?
All right, well, got anything else?
I think other than, we probably should set a meeting date for June. Would the 18th or the 25th, either of those dates work?
The 25th if you want, nine o'clock.
Okay, that would work for me.
The 10 o'clock with environmental health and planning wage discussion. And Mr. Short, what's new?
Uh, deep breaths.
Deep breaths, yes.
Lots of deep breaths, yeah.
Are you into yoga?
Uh, I need to, I need to get into something. I need to get into something. Um, yeah, so, um, we haven't all been in the same room in a while, but yeah, last week, two weeks ago, we, we advertised a new position. You guys approved that position, thank you very much. We advertised it. We, we moved kind of quickly and we didn't talk about wage.
We, we, we're gonna have it be depending on experience, see what kind of people you attracted.
Right, right. Um, but I thought we should have that discussion to, you know, I, I don't know how far apart my, my head is and your head is on what that number is, so that's, that's kind of what I wanted to talk about today. And part of this was I, I had, I had Mary do some reports for me, just budget wise. Cause I'm still, you know, I'm still kind of like fumbling with like what all these numbers mean, right? Like there's, the, the, you know, I've just kind of let the budget fly, right? But cash on hand right now, I, we, we kind of went through this when I first started, I think we were about, we were about 30 in the red when I started. Last year we ended up about 30 in the black, which was great, right? You know, there's, I think there's more discussion about like what, what we can do with some of those funds as far as, you know, fees that were, were taken in. And right now we're sitting at, we're sitting in the black about 31,000. I think I've got $10,000 in checks sitting on the desk upstairs, waiting to be processed. It's been like that for about three weeks. Anyway, business is booming.
And you're a one man show.
Yeah, and you know, the, the, we, we talk about hiring and, you know, it was about, it was about a year ago, I, I was like, oh man, we need, we need some help here, right? And so I feel like we're, we're hiring right now and just to like, you know, so everyone's expectations are the same, it's kind of like hunting for firewood in the winter, right? It's like, it's like we're kind of preparing for next year more than anything with this person. You know, hopefully I'm, hopefully the stars align and we, we get lucky and somebody, somebody good comes along, but, you know, so in my mind, I was, I was hoping for like a range.
Well, I think for, you know, I mean, if, if it's just all they have is like office, answer the phone, you know, just general office experience.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we're hiring. In any of the other offices, we're starting at $10 an hour. I mean, if they're just, you know, no experience whatsoever, but if they have, this is kind of my thinking, you know, if they have experience in looking up land descriptions, um.
Excel.
Yeah, some kind of knowledge.
GIS.
Yeah, is, you know, right around the $13 an hour because, you know, we've got people working here that's been here for a number of years that have worked up, that are only making $13 an hour. So it's not really fair to them to all of a sudden hire somebody at 15 whatever dollars an hour. And it, and Candace worked a long time here before she ever got to where she is right now. And so I don't think it's right to start somebody out at a higher wage when we've got people working here that's worked here a long time, that's only make it 30. And so I'm looking at the $10 to $13 depending on experience type. That's, that's my thinking anyway.
Yeah.
So before we go much further on that, I was thinking what, so for your immediate needs, Andy, I mean, to help kind of calm the storm and get the dust settled a bit more, is, is somebody, a new hire, someone to help Candace, gonna help you or do we need to maybe look at, like you said, maybe get some firewood now in the summer instead of next winter or next year? What, how, or maybe they're not even available, what about getting another engineer guy to kind of help you temporarily for four or five months, like a David DeGrandi or whoever else is out there? We did that one time when, was it you or Tim, someone got a little bit?
Well, we did it with Andy when you first started, didn't we?
For restaurants or?
Ron Rollins or?
No, no, they, you guys were, um, between when Tim left and I started, it was about four months.
Yeah, we had somebody like that.
Something, yeah.
So would that help you more than trying to?
Train somebody?
Just get somebody in the office.
Um, you know, if, if I, yeah, I've, I've put feelers out there for that exact same Right, everybody's busy. Like, like Miles City is busy, right? It's like, it's, it's wild, right? But I've been putting feelers out for someone to handle the inspections, the DPHH inspections, you know, that's like, that's like $6,000 a year or something like that.
And that's like the swimming pool and the restaurants?
Yep, yep, exactly. No one, nobody's bitten on that one yet. Um, I, um, that, that's kind of like the lowest hanging fruit, if I could find somebody that could come in and, and knock that stuff out. Cause otherwise I'm kind of looking at like, you know, like doing all that in November or something. The way my, I mean, I mean, I'm slowly feeding some of those in as, as we go because I have to because there's, you know, they've, they've got needs as well. But that's, that's one idea. Another idea I had was, um, maybe look, I, I, I feel like the, the other low hanging fruit is like floodplain permitting, like finding someone to handle that kind of stuff because that's a pretty big, it's a, it's a deep, really detail oriented program and it, um, you know, it, it, it comes in waves, I guess, you know, like it'll, you know, like right now I've got, I've got two that are, that are ongoing and at the, you know, at the most I've ever had is like three or four ongoing. So it's, it's one of those things that you're not like well greased on and all of a sudden you get a kind of, you know, Mineral County's got different regulations, then the town has different regulations and just, and just staying on top of that. There's engineering firms or they're, that's one of those programs where it's, the process is pretty standard that you can bring somebody on, hope, you know, if I can find somebody. I haven't put any feelers out with that. But that's a, it's a, that's a, that is a significant cost. And when we kind of talk about like, like wage, you, you know, you guys were paying about 15 grand a month in, in that time period. And that's on top of Candace's wage, right?
Right.
Somebody like that would be like a contract and service, you know, I mean, it wouldn't be really a, a wage wage if it was.
But it'd still be money out of the bucket.
Right, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just saying like the, the, I bring that up because it's a, you know, in that, in that time period wasn't, it wasn't that busy, right, as it is right now. Just, I'm just kind of giving you guys perspective on like the, those kind of costs.
That's what we're wondering is what, what would fit you best?
Yeah, what's gonna help you.
I've had comments, things are moving way too slow, you know, and you're always gonna have people making those comments.
That's, yeah, because, because the people that are getting.
I got, I got a subdivision that I, that should have been gone through years ago, you know, well, sorry, you know, that's not Andy's fault.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
No, the, 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 um, you know, we're gonna get somebody, if I had just somebody up there answering phones, right? Every time you pick up that phone, you got more work, right? It's like, yeah, took this call, here's some more work to do, right? So like that, that, that's not, um, that's not any kind of solution, right? Like just, just somebody sitting up there like interacting with the public because right, then their application gets submitted and then statutory timeframe starts and blah blah blah. Yeah, so what, what, what's gonna help me is, um, yes, someone who can draft letters, someone that can, you know, know how Excel's spreadsheets work, somebody that knows how our mapping system works. Dwayne, yeah, like the stuff you're hearing, um, those are, those are the people that probably have complicated projects, right? You're, yeah, anybody that's getting their, I mean, I'm approving stuff daily, right? Like it's, it's moving out through our office. Those people are never gonna complain, right? And those people are never gonna be like, hey, just wanna tell you that I got my, you know, all you're ever gonna hear is the.
Is the long, yeah, yeah.
Is the moaning for sure and that's, I mean, that's.
And I realize that.
That, that'll always be the case. You know, the, the thing that, yeah, I mean, I just have to prioritize, right? Like I, we've got, we've got statutory timeframe, so that's like my number one thing, like okay, if, if DEQ application comes in or a pre-application comes in or subdivision application comes in, that starts a statutory timeframe. And so that's like, that's something that, you know, state law says you have this many days to do it. If we don't meet it, then we get sued, right? So those are my focus. And then number two is, um, things that I think are gonna, that, that would slow down someone from like finishing something, right? Like septic permits, right? Like a DEQ approved project's got a septic permit, right? I try to get those off my desk as, as quickly as possible. You know, and, and then, you know, having someone to review certificates of survey, having somebody review, you know, that, that, all, all our edits that we had are on there, looking at that. That, you know, that, that, that I was relying on Candace a lot for. The thing that, that we're, that you're probably gonna hear the most complaints about and that we're falling down the most on are, hey, I'm selling this piece of property, I need a septic permit. hey, I'm selling this piece of property, I need a septic permit. The, or, or, you know, the, the, the permit on file. Because you've got, you've got 700 realtors in Missoula County, right? One piece of property comes for sale over here, all of a sudden you have five people that are trying to get information on it, right? I want septic permit, what's the status with this, blah, blah, blah? If there's any complications with the project. And I just, like, like the, the volume of that, I just, like, I can, hopefully I can respond to you and tell you that I can't get to you, right? And I'm not just ghosting you, that's my like first thing. And then actually finding that information, um, yeah, you know.
Are realtors kind of using it for comps or something when they do comparison sales?
Well, there's just so much activity of buying and selling of, you know, properties that exist or, or that are vacant or that have, you know, been sitting here that, um, anytime a property comes online, the, the buyers are trying to get all the information. And so there might be 10 people looking at it, the seller's trying to get information for it. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I could just kind of sit here and go on and on. Making myself nauseous a little bit like talking about.
So in terms of, in, in summary, you, you feel that a high dollar experienced engineer to come in and assist you would not be quite as beneficial as someone to do what you described, help with the phones, help draft letters, help get that stuff done. So basically another Candace would be more helpful than say a Jane Eby or David DeGrampy or somebody?
The, yeah, the, the subdivision, the, you know, we've got a contract for DEQ reviews. Those kind of trickle in and we've been able to stay on top of those. The subdivision review, um, yeah, I, I, I just don't feel like, I feel like I'm going to have to be involved in some of that in some aspect anyway. That it's not going to be like a, it's not going to be like a big help of them reviewing our, you know, reviewing the applications for the, for the regs, like I, I, because I'm going to have to review their stuff as well. Yeah, you know, finding someone to do the inspections, that would be, that would be, that's low hanging fruit. Finding an engineer to do floodplain permits, just since those are so sporadic. Talking about flood, floodplain. And oh, by the way, DNRC is pushing to continue the floodplain, um, project. And I'm feverishly trying to kick the can on it, right? Because it's going to trigger like, it's just going to trigger a bunch of work for me.
Right.
And, and so I'm trying to kick the can till fall right now. And so we'll see what happens, but, um, but that's right, that's like hovering on the horizon. I'm trying to think of other like.
So it sounds like you, you would prefer to move ahead with getting a, a good qualified clerk.
Yes.
Assistant.
Hundred percent. Yeah, I mean, ideally if Candace was here, someone who could help Candace.
Right.
That burden. Ideally, yeah. But if, um, yeah, I mean, we, you got to see what, what kind of applications you're going to get.
So what do you think is a fair way to draw somebody to that position?
You know, my, my, my thought was like 13 to 17 was kind of like a nice range to, to go from. Just the, the, and I, and I, and I sympathize with Lori and I, and I completely understand. But what I'm trying to do is create a, and I think I've done that, right? Is I create a fee structure where we're supporting that higher wage. You know, I, I, you got, you guys know how all the other offices run way more than I will ever know. But our office is the, right, it's the bottleneck for the tax base. You know, it's like, septic permit doesn't get written, house doesn't get built, lot doesn't create, created. Like the tax base just kind of stays where it is. And I'd like, and we're, you know, this is, this is boom times and I don't know how long it's going to last. I didn't see it coming, you know, I thought the opposite when the pandemic hit, you know? So I had, I had it called all wrong. But even before all that, we need, we needed some help, like getting stuff, getting stuff off our desk, processing it. And a lot of that stuff is just like creating, we shouldn't be doing, right? We should not be carrying that stuff across the clerk recorder, right? We should be handing it off to the applicant and they should just handle it from there. So there's, there's a, there's just things like that, procedures that, that a small office has to do to, have things run smoother, um, you know, just kind of training our consultants, like, you know, I had Candace working on documents, like, hey, here's, if you're, if you're filing a COS in Mineral County, here's the procedure, right? Then everybody's got it in front of them and they can see it. There's, there's just so many things like that. Getting all the documents electronic so we can, you know, like we can easily locate them. Like we've been working on that, that's a, that's a huge part of it. Getting, right, like, like if all our septic permits were all in line, we would never hear from those realtors, right? It'd be like, hey, you know, pay us a $5 subscription and you, you get a link to this website and you can go in there and you can look at, you know, tax records, septic permits, well logs. And then that's like, we don't even have, we don't even have to, you know, that, that's, that Missoula County is kind of the, they've, they've, they have a really well established, you get any document that's filed with the property. I mean, you just click on the property, it's all right there. And so there's, there, nobody's getting hassles about asbills at all, it's all there. Floodplain sewer permits, licensed establishments. And then the, the, the other place that we're stumbling is just like, you know, one of my favorite parts of this job is like just helping people that, you know, they come in and they're like, my bank says I got to get a water test. And like, you know, just like kind of stepping them through that and getting the water bottle to them and knowing that, you know, yeah, you, you guys can come and talk to us about this stuff. Or I got a, you know, bacteria hit on my well, what do I do? So there's that stuff, like just helping people through the process, figuring out what's left they're trying to do. And then like businesses, like people are, you know, everybody's excited about campgrounds. You know, commercial kitchens and they're all, and everybody wants to get, and, and just like kind of stepping them through that process so they can, uh, get it done. And then on top of all that, the, the general complaints, you know, like violations, like, I've got this thing going on with the St. Regis Senior Center well. I don't know if you guys. Yeah, just like unwinding that like stuff and just like, like, I mean, you know, because people will, you know, there's, it won't be forthcoming with you, they'll, you know, hide, shell game, blah, blah, blah. And just like, that's, that's one of them. Or like, hey, my neighbor's, you know, pooping in their yard. I got a little slum going up here on West Broadway. Anyway. And that's, and that, and, and, and just like the, the, now I kind of feel like I'm just complaining at this point. But like those, like.
No, we realize you've got a big, big job.
Yeah. And it's only gotten worse and getting worse.
That's why, that's why I asked, is, you know, what, what do you think is the best?
Yeah, and, and you know, those, all those engineers, all those, like if I was to tell DEQ right now, hey, you guys got to do our reviews for us, right? I don't want this contract anymore. They're, they're a dumpster fire. They, they're same thing, they like understaffed, you know, timeframes are through the moon. I think pretty, people are pretty excited that I'm like reviewing the applications, right? Cause then like they've got some guy to talk to and they can like hash out the problems. Same with subdivision, you know, subdivision review. The, but I would, yeah, I mean, I'll, every, so everybody, I guess what I'm saying is everybody's busy. Like David DeGrampy, he works for the city of Missoula now. I don't even know what his business is doing. You know, Sean Rowland is, he's working for, um, what's that county south of Helena, Broadwater. He works for Broadwater as a, as a private consultant. And he's submitting, you know, he's increased, he's doubling my workload because he's submitting things to me for, you know, like Chirock. I mean, he's, he's got his plate full as well. So just finding someone who would want to take on any portion of that work would be, I mean, I, well, we could see about that. The, the floodplain one is I, I've got someone to call and just, I could, I could confirm that and just see if they would be, if you want to take that out. Because that would be a nice like, you know, three or four hours a week that would go away. And if I can kick the can on DNRC, push those meetings back till Candace gets here. Cause that, that's a whole like revamping of our regulations, tracking, um, any discrepancies that the public has with the, the mapping. But back to wage, Lori. Yeah, I mean, our, the, the, the reason I think we would pay someone more, it's just the, the nature of the business. It's just, it's a, you know, we're bringing in our own, we're bringing in our own fees and we're creating the, you know, creating the tax base, um, the, you know, the quicker we can move. And you just need, you need a lot, you know, like, you know, I was having conversations with this, before this even happened to Candace, right? And she was just like, you know, shell shocked every week, like just, how are we going to do this, blah, blah, blah? And it's like, it's like, I understand, you know, we're in it, we're just going to battle through it. But, you know, you got to know four different programs. You have to, you know, you have to be able to run Excel, you have to be able to run our mapping program. And you, you like, the, the uniqueness of that position is you learn, everything you gather in that position is applicable in the real world. You know, outside this, outside this government bubble for sure. I mean, it's, it's like a, that is one of the selling points, right? Like you want to learn about land use, you want to learn about environmental health, you want to learn about GIS, you know, it's, it's, um, yeah, so that's my, that's my kind of pitch to the.
Right, but once they, they learn the job and their wage moves up, you know, I, I, I just don't think that just somebody that's has no experience whatsoever.
And I agree with you.
You know, just to start them off, you know, at a higher wage.
Yeah, if they have no experience.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I, I think it should be depending on experience.
What I think is you're not going to draw anybody, you won't have an applicant for that job because the inexperienced are going to be afraid or they're going to go take an easier job. And if you get someone that has the knowledge, they're going to say, the money isn't there, why should I apply for that job? And it's happening everywhere else. People aren't, aren't taking jobs because they don't feel there's enough money there.
Yeah.
The experienced people aren't going to come and work for $10 an hour or $11 an hour. They're not, they're going to go someplace else.
Yeah, I mean, it's a tough job market for sure, just anyway. And you, you know, like houses are, there's bidding wars and houses on Wall Street. It's like, you know, houses used to sit on the market for five years here and now it's like, they used to be $50,000, now they're, now they're $215.
There was one sold the other day on Facebook and one day, one day it was on there. I should have waited.
Right.
I told my whiteboard.
Well, I don't know.
Anyway, I just feel like I just.
We're a little bit leery though about putting a, putting a number in the paper.
Well, I think depending on.
Yeah, because if we get somebody that isn't like, you know, knows their stuff, then they're going, hey, the paper said. And, and the other problem is not to minimize, like you said, you're kind of the, you've got your more fees going, you got $31,000 in the black. You're the reason that people increase our tax base because they're coming to you for the subdivisions and the septic permits. I mean, it kind of, I understand what we're, what we often battle here, that the rest of Mineral County's revenue is pretty much set and we have a lot of people that are good workers and they, we want to reward them. And some of them are in more, I mean, we, we start out, our heavy equipment operator at $17 an hour. Ouch, you know? So how do we make it fair and commensurate for everybody? I mean, the argument that this office is important and critical is not going unheard. Just what do we do with the domino or the ripple effect of someone who's been here for 10, 12 years? And they're still down there at 13 an hour, you know? So that's our battle, Andy, from time to. So I mean, I understand, we need you to get help because you're critically important in our tax base and, you know, the growth and improvement in all the environmental laws and the subdivision laws. We can't make mistakes there, we want you to not be overwhelmed. But then I, I would rather talk about it when we see who's in front of us and what their qualifications and the expertise before, you know, put $13 to $17 an hour in the paper and then get somebody who just got out of high school and we're going, ah, well, we weren't thinking of paying you that much, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that, that all sounds reasonable. And you know, I've, I've, I've ran a branch office for 12 years. We had, you know, we had between 32 people and 16, you know? Like that was kind of where we swang. So I, I don't know, maybe I've hired 20 people, fired a few. Saw a few go that were great. So I, I, you know, hiring is, you, I mean, you guys do it all the time too, right? Like hiring's tough.
Yeah. I heard an ad on the radio in Missoula yesterday for one of the major roofing companies and they're starting out their roofers at $18 an hour. And that's hard work, going up and down and carrying sheets of plywood and.
Oh, yeah.
And they live in Missoula where the rent is through the roof. Anyway, it's just a, a hard, a hard problem to solve. So what did we get last time? This one person was, answered the ad?
We have one in-house application, that's it. And I think the ad was a very nice ad. I think it should have caught the attention of people. I love the depending on experience because I think that's less intimidating than I know, okay, well, I don't have a lot of experience, but I could still apply. Or I could say, I have a lot of experience, I will apply. So I do really like that depending on experience. Andy and I talked a little bit about, I showed him on my whiteboard how many applications are coming in for all the positions. It just isn't happening.
Yeah, and nothing surprises me about any of that, right? I like, I, like I said, I've, you know, I've hired engineers, I've hired administrative staff and it's, administrative staff is almost the most difficult. And that's in a high population area, right? Where there's graduates, you know, people who graduated, you know, blah, blah. So I, I, I don't expect like a quick fix. I mean, I just, I just have never experienced that, you know? You, sometimes you roll the dice, right? Boom, you know, Yahtzee, but, um, I, I guess, yeah, that's my expectation, so it, it would take some time. And, and you know, once we, once it's a, once it's accomplished and initiated, my workload doubles at that point, right? Just like training someone to like, you know, here's what we got, here's, you know, just going through our processes. And I'm, you know, I, I enjoy that stuff, right? Like it's not, it's not, it's not a burden, but it's, 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 it's going to eat my lunch for a while, you know?
I was thinking, there was a kid that applied when you applied, he was right out of college, didn't have a lot. I want to go back and find his phone number and see if he'd be willing to come down and. He, he, he was going to college for kind of like.
Is a planner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can check that.
Cause he, he was working the summers as a river guide, that's how he caught wind of our ad. He was down there working for somebody on the river.
Oh, yeah, no, that, that's a great idea. Yeah, any of those old applicants, um, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, maybe if he hasn't got a start yet, he'd like to cut his keep mentoring under you and.
No, it's a great, I mean, you know, it's a great spot to, to get your.
And if he likes the river already, maybe he likes the area. Maybe he'd be enticed by something, some employment out here.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a bad, that's a bad idea.
Before we wrap it up, because we got up.
Oh, yeah.
And not to cut you short, so.
No.
Would you like us to just run this ad again and see what happens? Or what's your preference at this point?
And I'd like to.
Yeah.
So if you don't mind.
Keep it.
I do want to make it, yeah. I thought it was a very nice looking ad, but I do want to brighten it up a little. I think the wording, I'll keep the wording, but I want to somehow make brighter colors.
Sure.
I don't know.
Sounds great.
Anything.
Put like pictures of septic tanks on it.
And it is also, I have another ticker tape of the website, so it's right up front and it's, it's blasted everywhere. And Andy saw the ads. I posted it in the post office, the bank.
And everybody I talked to, hey, you know, we got this position out there. If you know anybody, you like, because I, I mean, lots of times it's just word of mouth, you know?
Yeah. Not everybody gets the mineral blab and sees the ad.
And it takes, you know, takes a bit. And people are moving here, right? I mean, you guys see it, right?
I was wondering if maybe there's somebody that's retired or, or just moved here that has some kind of an experience that.
Yeah, that's what I, I mean, that's like the Yahtzee one. I was hoping that.
Hope somebody moves here that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we, we'll redo, rerun the ad and see if we get more. And yeah, just keep in mind, we want to help you, Andy. We just are reluctant to put a black and white number in the paper. But come forward with who and what you suggest if we get a good applicant and they, you know, are fitting what you want.
Yeah, okay. All right, so thanks for your support.
All right, so this is on the agenda. I guess who brought this floor? Are you Don?
No, the safety committee.
A safety committee?
I am the safety coordinator, but I'm.
I'm part of the safety committee.
When did you guys have a meeting to talk about this?
Uh, our last safety meeting was.
A month ago. We have a three-hour, is it, it's a three-hour meeting every, every two weeks, actually. Yeah.
Basically, the largest liability the county holds right now for like slips and falls and general public would be the parking lots. They, I mean, we've had falls in there. We've had some injuries. And frankly, the parking lots are old. They've been patched over repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly. So at this point, it's more, more patchwork than it is parking lot. Some of it's falling apart. We've got a pothole building up or starting to tear out in the front there and the end of the parking lot in the back. Big pit that is the, the handicap parking, which collects all the ice and all the water in the winter. So it's not exactly handicapped accessible. And the handicap accessible area over here is, you could probably, it'd be real tough to get a wheelchair over at this point. Getting it over even into, onto the sidewalk. We don't exactly have handicap accessibility in the back for the doors to be automatically opening. Yeah, I mean, they're just, they're, they're old. They need to be replaced and they need to be replaced well and done correctly the first time. It's kind of a buy once, cry once kind of situation. And then maintenance after that would be a lot easier. A lot cheaper to resurface.
So it says here, not renovating. What does that mean?
Outright replacing.
So tear it all out and re-set everything back down?
New, new subsurface, everything.
Is there, I'm not familiar with paving projects. Can, can it just be swept and cleaned and then re, relay over the old overlay? No, can't do that.
You can, but you're not going to match up on your sidewalks.
Pop up.
And realistically, to do it right is you're going to put drains in and get to get, find a place, get rid of the water.
Oh.
You got to, yeah.
So that would be part of it, not just new parking lot, but one that has drains so that the water buildup isn't an issue? What kind of a price tag are we looking at?
If I remember correctly, the, what was it, a hundred and seventeen?
It's a hundred and seventeen thousand. It was sixty, sixty-seven thousand eight hundred for the back lot and forty-nine six fifty for the front lot.
Who was that from?
Uh, Shadow Asphalt.
That was the only bid we got, estimate?
That's the only people that came out. I called three different places and it's the only one that came out in the episode. And they're pretty much a pretty.
And that, that includes dry wells and?
That includes drainage and regrading. And that's milling all the old asphalt out and replacing.
And being with the, more and more people moving in from out of state, the chances of litigation for slips and falls is going up.
Wow, they're not that. I mean, they're not the biggest liability in the county. If you have slips and falls, they've also been in the wintertime.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there's, if you have a pothole, then we patch it, you know, they're not, it's not like there's big ledges everywhere. There's a little ledge out there. Things that can be, you know, obviously, it's a hundred and, from nineteen, from nineteen twenty, so there's a few dips and dives, but it's not.
That actually is our biggest claims are.
In the wintertime, right?
No, not just the wintertime, no.
You know, so if somebody's fell in the summer?
Yeah, we have had. We had an April fall. We've had spring falls. Absolutely.
Right, but as far as, as far as what I'm saying is there's no like sharp edges. There's no.
I'm just saying, that's where most of our injuries have come from, our reports.
We actually have a trench building where the asphalt's separating from the sidewalk back there. There's about a six-inch trench all the way around in the back there.
Right. No, I'm not saying they don't need replaced. I'm just.
According to our insurance, uh, one of their largest claims is through parking lots, accidents, falls, lack of maintenance, things of that nature.
And we did actually have a, an elderly person who fell in the handicap place. Can you explain what that?
The, she was, she's one of the, she had to wear, use a cane and she tripped and fell over the riggers that are by the handicap. And luckily she wasn't injured.
The riggers by the handicap?
Yeah, the pavement on the handicap zone in the back here is, there's about six different levels because of all the patching. And she tripped and fell on one of them trying to get into her car. And luckily she didn't injure herself, but so I got lucky there. I helped her up and off she went. I reported it to Don to make sure she knew that was, that happened. Nothing came of it other than that, but it's a matter of time before it does.
So then back to the little separate front and back, do we, which one is in more dire need? Do we do both of them or?
Well, I think if they're out here doing one.
It's where you're going to get the money, you know what I mean? It's, it's a lot of money. So.
Well, in, in your budget, master's budget, you have, you still, I don't know what you had what you were looking at, contracted services. You still have two hundred and fifty-six thousand?
That's all for service projects.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
Yep, okay.
That's their line item. I, I understand I have money. It's just that I think most of my money, I would have to call, I would call Mako because I think most of my money is pointed, you know, Secure Rural Schools is for roads. Barca is for roads. You know, they're, they have to, they're, it's not maintenance money. It's road money. And I, I would have to call Mako and ask about some of it, but it's a big chunk for me. I don't, I don't necessarily want to pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for parking lots at the courthouse when I've been scrimping and saving to try to, you know, I'd like to buy a loader and I'd like to, you know, do some other things too.
And we have roads that.
Right, I have lots of roads. I put, I put down ninety loads of asphalt last year, you know, and we, and that's a lot of money and a hundred and twenty thousand, I, like I said, I've been going without for twenty years, you know, so we can save our money and make sure that we're sustainable for the future. It's just a big chunk. That's a lot of money. A hundred and twenty grand is.
Would be my recommenda-, if, I mean, it's hard to find the money now, but like for future things, because at some point we're going to have to do this, but future maybe some sort of savings account just for big, major maintenance projects that come up only once a decade.
All we do is we have a capital out, you know, thing that is there for maintenance, for a roof or a big, bigger project like that. But yeah, we usually don't budget.
And isn't there, isn't there like hundreds of thousands of dollars in ARPA, some, some money, COVID money that is around, like, for different, maybe some of that can be?
Yeah. I think we had some of it. Not all of it went to the sheriff's office.
I think there's some flexibility in some of the spending, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying it's all going to come out of the.
Well, and the sheriff got the, got the.
Majority of it.
Corona relief money, but now there's ARPA money. So you're talking about the ARPA money.
Yeah, any of that money, pools of money that are sitting around, it has, have a little flexibility. I'm not against helping out, you know, for the greater good. But I just, I, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand just strictly out of my budget is going to, would hurt. Like, so that's a, that's almost a brand new front end loader for me or close to it.
Once you're not too far from needing.
Well, that's what we're talking, already talking about. That's why I've already started the process, got a pole put in, sawmill, you know, because I like to update and move and, you know, keep this stuff fresh and. But no, I mean, I am, I'm not against helping. I mean, but I think maybe we should look at where else we can pull from, maybe a.
Well, we could look at.
And maybe.
Know how much you've gotten as capital funded, maybe possibly split it or something.
And maybe this is a, a five-year plan. You know, maybe you get a five-year plan and start putting stuff away. Maybe you do one at a time. I don't know. You know, the thing is, they're out here every year. We would, he told me they would save mobile costs to do both of them at once. But if they're, if we just plan it when they're already out here, that would save mobile costs too, so.
Which one do you think is a more dire need, the front or the back?
I'd probably say the back is probably one of the worst because it's a lot more patching been done on that over the years. And I think that's the older of the two parking lots, isn't it?
Yeah, because this one was built when the sheriff, when the jail.
Yeah.
Which came in. That one's been there forever.
Well, that's why it's just down here in the discussion, kick the idea around and look into.
Yeah, just see where you can pull from. You know, there's, there's, there might be some money, monies available for.
It was based on wages in the sheriff's office?
Yeah, majority, but there was still like a hundred and some thousand, I think that was, was, didn't go to the sheriff's office, so. Who could be a part of that or?
Right, a shared effort.
Share, yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I mean, I'm, I'm good with that. Like I said, it's for the greater good, you know? And it, and I do feel like if we had a road tax and we were getting tax, local taxpayer money, I would feel more like we could share, that would be a shareable. You know, with this stuff, I'm afraid, I'm, I am afraid that it's more pointed to like there's stipulations with it.
How about parking meters?
That would work. That would work.
That would go over like a church.
Might keep them up for parking lots.
I'm all for a, a local gas tax. Or a sales tax. Sales tax or like a sales ta-, I guess sales tax would be more my angle. Help everybody pay their property taxes with the Washington people and Oregon people that are all coming through here. I think sales tax is the only way to go.
I think you do.
Sucks for a little while, but when you realize that you're sharing your, that you're sharing your tax burden with all these people using I-90, that's, it's not so bad.
Yeah. Always thought it would, a toll going up, but look out.
Well, if you're going to do that, you got to build a gate so we can shut it once in a while.
No, well, I mean, no, no, I'm talking about, I mean, I was in, go to Florida, Texas, they all have tolls on their interstates or their railways. And even if it was one percent or a half a percent went to Mineral County.
Right.
We'd still make a lot of money.
Yeah, and we're cheap. I mean, this is cheap. You go, we go to Oregon every year and you pay to park, you pay to launch your boat, you pay to camp, you pay to, you pay to, it's every, you, you got to have a pocket full of five-dollar bills because it's, it's five dollars no matter what you're doing. You just, you expect it, you know? You, you come somewhere like here and people just come, people just take advantage of it. I mean, they get to use all our stuff and give nothing back, you know? Maybe they, maybe they get gas.
They give us stuff back. They leave all the litter.
Yeah.
And that's getting horrible too. But speaking of that, that's driving me crazy. In fact, I'm trying to figure out some way to construct a, and market a giant sweeper to clean the burl pits of the freeway. That makes me sick. So.
When I was working, I had the luxury of taking an exit off an exit ramp, a little, like a Lozo on a fish creek letting open. And right there were the tourists with the minivan doors open, out there throwing all their McDonald's trash, they're right on the ground.
Yeah.
And I actually got to catch them red-handed, so I was able to write a ticket and make them pick it up. But all, all the time, you never catch them.
Right, people are such pigs, you know? We, we went out to, out there by Glenn Blaylock's, it's Chuck and Murdis. Yeah, I suppose some of you know them.
Yeah.
They're part of the Joe Stead clan and, uh, they have that spot down there. We went out and built a big ditch along the road. It was just a big wide spot and people would park there and throw their diapers out. And so we went and tried to help them out, build a ditch so maybe people wouldn't be so apt to pull off there. And just because it's ridiculous. It's lazy.
One of the other things I'm trying to do to help alleviate this sort of thing is just like efficiency. It's like, you know, the LED lights, you know, try and get those in. Try to, you know, see about what we can do about solar panels or something, you know? Anything that would help bring down month-to-month cost of my department.
Hey, I got a question.
What's up?
Or just something I noticed today. That pole, we put out that pole, that light pole back when we had the grant money for, you know, so it'd light up the walkways for the girls whenever anybody worked late or the commissioners, anybody. And I see it's rusting out the bottom really bad. Does it need a hole drilled in? Has it got water in it or?
I think it's from the salt.
So you probably need to grind it and clean it or something so it doesn't rust all day. Repaint it. I just hate for that to fall down because it looks pretty bad. I never noticed it until today. That whole bottom's all rusty and the paint's all gone.
It's starting to get pretty bad.
It's bubbling. It's rusting so bad, it's bubbling.
It's got some good body cancer in it. Now maybe cutting it down and bringing it back down and then, I don't know.
And I, we've got grinders up if you ever want to clean it up and paint it, so.
Sure. It is just, basically, this is just maintenance stuff that's been accruing interest over years, you know?
Well, that's not that, that's not really that old, I don't.
Well, no, not just that, but like.
Yeah, I can't, I just couldn't believe it was rusted already. I'm like, because we put that in brand new in, let's say, two thousand seven or so?
Probably been overlooked since then.
Well, how, well, we'll be going to another meeting here in five minutes. How's it going at your department since you're here? How are, how's the crew doing? And I know a year one employee's still down and did, uh, have you been receiving any applications?
I don't know what we've received, to be honest with you.
I'm, I'm getting one, the first one, this afternoon or sometime today. And they know to come in here and get me if I'm not in my office. So that will be one. First one.
We had, we've had a few picked up.
But we're, we're letting the applications come in from anywhere, right? As long as they're in your office by the deadline.
Right, there, there's applications available in.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, so people can bring you an application if they drive by your shop?
They can bring me one? They could. I could turn it in to her.
But that's not, but that isn't really the way that we do it. Yeah, the way that we do it is it comes, the application has to be turned in to me. That's really the way we do it.
Right, but it doesn't say who has to turn it in. I can turn it in to you.
No, no, Jason, no, the spirit of that is that the person with the application brings it directly to me.
But if they trust me to do it, I can do it to you.
No.
As long as it's turned in.
Wait, 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 why are we limiting our opportunities?
No, it's not limiting opportunity.
Okay, so, so I guess we're going to hash this out now. Um, for one thing, there was somebody who wanted to turn in the application yesterday that was told, no, they said, they called and asked to turn in the application and, and they were told that, they said, were asked, where did you get that application? You don't, you get those from me. Well, that's not true because that's not in policy. And I told you that there's applications available with me, you, online, on your board and the clerk and quarters office. So they can pick one up any of those places, right? So, and they did. They picked one up from the clerk and quarters office. Same, I built it, right? I built the packet. So then they were made to come get another one because that one wasn't okay. You did, you said that one was old or something. And it wasn't old. It was out of the same, it was my, my one I built, so.
And so here's the thing, Jason, you and I are on the same team and that is to get every applicant that we can. Here was a miscommunication and a misunderstanding. The miscommunication was the person who called me said, my boyfriend sent in an applicant, uh, application resume a long time ago, more than six months ago. I just, my niece just picked up an application and dropped it off for him. An application. There, I said, I have packets here that you need to pick up. Excuse me, let me finish, please. She, she never said that she got the packet that you were insistent that they signed for.
No, no.
So I did, I followed what you told me and it was very, it was done very tactfully and very professionally. They came in then, gave me an updated resume as they needed to do because their stuff was old and took a packet and I signed their name out as you instructed me to do.
Right, but we can't sign it out. I told you. I came down to your office on Wednesday and I told you. Right, but we can't sign it out. I told you, I came down to your office on Wednesday and I told you exactly. You're not, you're not to sign them out, right? I talked to Alan. We're not signing them out, we're signing them in.
Well, your sheet says which packet.
Right, but I made, I came in your office to make this clear, that, that applications were available in multiple spots. So you can't sign out. Applications are picked up from the clerk and quarters office.
Sign out one when they're online, don't we?
Right, we're not signing out applications. We're signing in when they, when they're received. We're receiving applications.
If, if, if people want to get an application from the foreman or from the sheriff or from you or, we should let them become available because sometimes you might get the dentist.
No, absolutely. That, there wasn't, there was a miscommunication and all it took was.
You told her that, that, where did you get that? That's not the way it goes.
You know what, I.
I talked to these people face to face.
I got an application. Jason, I did say, well, where did you get an application? Because just an application, I wasn't sure she got the packet that you asked for. I am not.
So the packet is just, the only, the only benefit of the packet, it has a job description. There's only one application, right? There's only one county application. It can be picked up online. The only benefit of the packets is it has a job description, right? And if they do it online, they can call and request a job description. So all that's fine. And if somebody wants to turn one in, whether it's old or whether they got it during goes or what, if it's in crayon, we accept it, right? It doesn't matter.
No, no, it wasn't that. She asked me to transfer what he already had in my file, which was older than six months. That is what she asked me to do and I said, no, I will need his updated stuff. We only keep that for six months. So he needed to turn in a new resume and that is what they brought to me and then I gave him the packet. I want to restate, I'm on the same team you are and I'm working to get applicants for every position.
This is simple stuff. This isn't, this isn't, we don't have to make it hard. This is, you give an application out, we receive it in. It's that simple and we want to, we want to get as many out there and as many in as possible.
And if they're coming to bring the application, say, you have an updated resume. Yes, here you go. I mean, it's all, it's incumbent on them if they want to get the job to make, we don't need to deny or, or make them come back down if, if they don't give a shit. They just want to turn it in in the mail or online. We, we're receiving the applications. I don't know why we should be limiting that opportunity.
I don't ever limit and I really take offense at the miscommunication that took place here. I would never turn someone away from turning in their application.
Yesterday, you made them come pick up another one. The same exact application package they already had.
But I didn't know that because that is not what she said.
Instance where an application was turned in to a department head who did not turn it in to HR.
Well, then that, then that's our problem is under receiving. But I'm talking about the disseminating of the application.
Like I said, twenty years.
Be able to get the application from.
We've hired, we've hired eight people and there's never been an issue. This is the only time we've ever had an issue and that, and it's because we're so organized, I guess, I don't know. But it's, no, that's not what we want to do.
There was a miscommunication. I continue to work very hard for the county and to fill job positions and that, I'm just gonna leave it at that.
But you think I'm not? I'm doing the same thing.
No, but it's you saying that I didn't.
It's not me. I got a call, a complaint, so.
There was a miscommunication and I will continue to work vehemently to fill positions here.
Yeah, and that was it, so. Good enough.
All right. Hey, is, um.
Don't forget you're the third.
Jason. Though, going up Dry Creek, that first part, that pavement.
Yeah.
Can, is there any chance you could get those potholes filled up?
We're gonna put asphalt on it.
Oh, are you?
Hot mix, yeah, because we already know.
Okay.
Way to fix it other than that, so yeah, we're gonna do that. We did six thousand feet of dust abatement up there this week. We had some extra. So we continued on and did a little more, so.
Yeah, yeah, um, I had brought up Kelly's blade and dry, so I ran up picking up last night.
Yeah, the potholes are bad, but they, it's probably the worst frosties in the whole county. They just, it's not gonna hold over the berry line, you know? Probably one we should have, you know, we did back in two thousand and two or something, we did Millings, we did Chip Seal, probably shouldn't have ever been done just because of how bad the heaves are because it's just never gonna hold, so. There's so much water in the ground.
Okay, thanks.
Joanne Romosco and Pam Walling may go help hit the high deductible HSA.
Morning. Hello. This is Dawn from Mineral County. Hello.
Hi Dawn, this is Pam.
Hi Pam. We have Commissioner Simons, we have Calan, Commissioner Johnston and Commissioner Zal, Zalawi just stepped out for a second. He'll be right back.
All right.
I got it up all the way. It's up all the way. Pam, we can't hear you real well. I have the volume turned up to ten here as far as it will go.
Hi, this is Joanne.
Hello, Joanne. Hello.
Hi. Sorry, I was on the, I, I had started the conference line and I put myself in as leader and so I was just out there hanging out by myself, so I'm so sorry that I'm late.
Hello, K Bear.
Hello, Roman.
How goes the battle?
Good. Speaker phone.
Oh, hi Pam.
Hi, Roman.
And we got Joanne there as well, eh?
Hello there, how are you?
Pretty fair. All right, so. We've got the high deductible HSA discussion. So, help, help us understand better what we maybe didn't realize we were given the nod to, uh, so this is, uh, this is gonna be for a year now because we, we did authorize it, so, but going with that, it also meant that the, the difference would be automatically put in the HSA for them. Uh, we thought it was, we kind of thought it was an, an option. We didn't know it was a mandate.
And you know, Roman, I apologize, I, I probably owe you all an apology for that. I bet during that meeting, I'm, I recall that we, you know, made the decision to add the HSA and I just, I honestly do not recall even asking the question of, you know, would the difference go into an HSA? And I bet that's my bad for making that assumption that it would. And that's sort of the driving factor to get people to take the HSA. So I take responsibility for that. I apologize. I certainly didn't intend to cause the confusion and the chaos that it has caused. Because I really just don't recall truthfully and I didn't make any notes of it either. So chances are, I, I probably dropped the ball and did not ask that question. So I apologize for that and I think, you know, today if we can kind of talk through, um, what the benefits of that are, et cetera, and I'll let Pam take the lead on that and, and then just make sure that we're prepared to do whatever it is that we need to do on our end.
Okay.
So I think, you know, the assumption typically is, and not always, because whether or not the county allows the difference in the.
You still there? Did we lose you?
It said ended.
Thank you. You will now be placed into conference.
The only thing better would be like. Hello.
All right, we're here.
Oh gosh. Oh my gosh, so, so, so sorry.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Okay, we'll let Pam pick up or she left off?
Okay, dokey.
So what I was, what I was saying was that although it's not mandatory for a county to allow the difference in the contribution of the cost of the HSA compared to your contribution amount go into, or I should say, the difference between your contribution and the high deductible health plan. It's not mandatory that the difference be allowed to go into somebody's health savings account. But I mean, typically that's the incentive and the reason that people usually offer them. Um, however, it's always good to offer a high deductible health plan as an employer, just basically because you have employers that for whatever reason need that coverage. And, um, the, for example, if you were gonna have a big surgery, a lot of times that is your best plan option. Or you might have an employer or employee that comes from another employer that their spouse still has a high deductible health plan and for whatever reason they need to be on a, on an HD plan. So it's always good to offer a high deductible health plan, but I think we had just kind of assumed that you guys would also allow the difference in the cost of a HD plan and your contribution amount to go into an individual's HSA. And so that being said, I think, you know, we had started the conversation about who are you going to use an HSA vendor or whatever and, um, I think Dawn originally had initiated that conversation with the office and so I think we just maybe kind of assumed that you guys had decided that, you know, we were going to do that probably because we had already maybe referenced that or made reference to that. So we're just trying to figure out, is that your intention is to allow the difference into an HSA? And then if it is, I think, you know, we should probably let Calan speak to, you know, what are the different options in terms of vendors? And I found out that, you know, she had mentioned to me there was Aflac as a potential and Aflac themselves do, do not do it, but I guess they have a new vendor that does it.
It's Maestro.
Another county that's actually looking at them. What was it called?
It's Maestro.
Maestro?
Maestro.
Oh, Maestro. Ooh, Maestro?
Yes.
We didn't know there was a ooh on the front of it.
Yes.
Is that like Brand X?
Well, I'll have to double check and see if that was a county. I had dumped Maestro recently because they were a nightmare. And I'll double check with the county that I'm pretty sure that they dumped Maestro in the last two years because of problems that they had with them, but anyway, regardless, we just wanted to have that conversation of, you know, what was your intention in compared to what we thought the intention was?
I guess, yeah, go ahead, Lori.
So who then handles the, if it goes into, um, this fund then, who then handles the paperwork and the?
Either it would be Allegiance or Maestro. We do not.
Right, that's what I just wanted to make sure that if we was to put the difference into, um, that fund or whatever, who then manages it? Say if somebody wants to put in a claim, you know, to use it.
You would choose the vendor who you want to manage it. And I mean, they're different than flex accounts because with a flex account, a claim actually has to be filed to get your money out. But honestly, for a lot of people with HSA account, they are using them more as savings accounts. And so a lot of people eventually take money out of them and they typically do them through a debit card that's issued by the vendor, whoever you choose to vendor to be. So some counties allow just local banks to administer their HSA's, but honestly, a lot of times they don't do a great job. And then, um, other times counties will use, like, I think Calan said that she had previously used a company called, I think it was American Fidelity.
That's what Superior School District uses.
And so, you know, typically speaking, a lot of the counties will use Allegiance because Allegiance is already processing claims and are familiar with the, the accounts and have things already set up. And some of them also have flex accounts already set up with them. So it's just a matter of you would choose your vendor and whether it be a local bank or it would be that you choose one vendor for the whole county. And then, uh, employees usually have a debit card to access money to essentially cover the cost of their medical claims for dental vision prescriptions, those services.
So Pam, quick question on the vendor. So Allegiance said that they were gonna, um, charge two dollars and fifty cents per account to the county?
Per month.
Per month? The county has to pay for that, correct? The employee, can we?
No, the county doesn't have to pay for it. The county can tell the employee, if you want your account, then you have to pay the fee.
Okay.
So I have a lot of counties that actually make the employee pay the fee. So let's say your difference in the amount of the cost of the HD plan and the contributions from the county, let's say that it was seventy-five dollars. Well, do this, how the employee, well technically you're only gonna get seventy-two dollars and fifty cents in your account because two dollars and fifty cents of it is gonna be used to pay the fee to Allegiance.
Okay.
So we have the counties that we do, that do that. Um, we have some counties that do pay the fees because every dollar that's put into an HSA, just like every dollar that goes through pre-tax, um, anything that's pre-taxed, you know, you save taxes on and the employee saves taxes on. So some counties make the counties pay the fees, some counties pay the fees, or something. You know, I guess there are certain local banks that don't cost, charge fees at times, but they're probably also doing absolutely nothing to administer the accounts and the employees don't have the opportunity to earn interest on their, or very good interest on their, um, accounts later on.
So they earn interest on that HSA account?
It depends on the manager, the, yeah, who, if you have a company like Allegiance, after you get, I think it's a thousand or two thousand dollars in your account, you can start to invest it and just like any other retirement account. Now, if you use a local bank, they're probably gonna pay you the same rate that, um, they're paying on their savings accounts very, very little. But most actual HSA vendors that administer the plan, you know, they have sophisticated systems so that if your employee goes to Walmart and picks up a knee brace and a prescription and a six-pack of beer, it's done, it's not gonna allow them to buy the six-pack of beer with their HSA card, right? Because it's known it's not for a medical, dental, vision expense. But they're doing a good job administering those plans. They're also allowing for investment options and better than like what a bank would pay for savings.
Is.
To get taxed.
Like, do they have to?
Report, report that interest earned on it.
Yeah.
No, no, I just couldn't hear if you said if it was taxed or taxed.
Taxed. Like, do they have to do anything?
Okay, so don't, no, there's, they don't, it's tax-free. Well, I should say, if they took the money out for a non-eligible medical dental vision, you know, if they took it out to go both buy a motorcycle, yes, they'd be taxed and they'd be penalized.
Okay, I was, how would they, yeah.
You know, but the interest didn't come there not taxed.
Well, we don't even want that to be an, an opportunity for that. That's what we're concerned about.
I would make sure that you pick a vendor that's sophisticated enough to allow that to not happen. You know what?
And that's really.
Go to Joanne if you want to speak to that.
Oh, I was just gonna say that, you know, I mean, the thing on an HSA is it's an individual person's account, so the account is set up under, say for example, my HSA, it's set up under my name and from an IRS rules perspective, I'm personally accountable for the funds and how the funds are used. So should the IRS audit me? And I've taken money out of my HSA, I just have to have the EOBs or the receipts to be able to demonstrate what I took that out for. If you use a company that's sophisticated enough, like, you know, um, Allegiance I know is, and there's many others that are out there as well, that makes sure that that's a tax, or that is a qualified medical expense that you're using it for, it's a non-issue because it wouldn't allow anything to go through. So for example, if you went to Walmart and you were picking up a prescription and you also wanted to grab a six-pack of beer for the weekend, it's going to deny that transaction because it's smart enough to know that that's not a medical expense. So with some of them, they're very sophisticated and they would prevent the member from ever getting into trouble. For those that are not, the HSA, um, when you sign up for an HSA account at the bank, there's all sorts of material that you get on, on what the, the rules are around an HSA and it's all federal rules that are out there and it's all available. And we can certainly supply and help with that information or, I mean, the HSA vendor would do that, but it's really an individual liability perspective that they have to be able to demonstrate and prove that it was a medical expense, if that makes sense. The nice thing is, is that you can use it for qualified medical expenses all the way up. The nice thing is, is that you can use it for qualified medical expenses all the way up to age 55. And the night, and like, say, for example, if you have a member that seeks care with, you know, naturopathic type care, it is, it's definitely a qualified medical expense, but typically, traditional insurance doesn't cover those costs. So it's an awesome opportunity for people like that, because they can max it out at either $3,600 a year total with, with the county contribution included in that. But they can take as much out of their paycheck as they want as well, up to that $3,600 per individual. If they cover their family, they can take out 70, excuse me, $7,200 a year pre-tax. And then it just rolls and rolls and rolls. And so I often just use myself as an example, that, you know, John and I have had an HSA account for years. And for the vast majority of those years, we haven't done anything but preventive care. And so that's covered at 100%. So we have well over $50,000 just sitting there for retirement. And as long as I, as long as I use it for medical expenses, it, it, you know, everything's fine. After age 55, you can also then increase your contribution, $1,000 at the individual level. Or if, say, you cover yourself and you're both over 55, you can increase it to $9,200 per year for family. And so that's an added benefit as well. And then, say I want to retire at age 60, or 61, instead of 65, I can utilize all the funds in there to pay for my premium until I hit Medicare age. So, I mean, it's an incredible account for people that are trying to plan for retirement. And then at age 65, that money's free and clear. And, um, you, I mean, if you want to buy a boat, you can buy a boat. So, I mean, it's your money, and it's non-taxable after age 65. And you can't contribute to the HSA. Really, you should be about 64 and a half, is what Pam has just recently read, is that at about 64 and a half, you really should stop contributing to your HSA, because at that point, then, the government sees it as sort of double-dipping, so you can't contribute after age 65. So that was probably a lot of information, but I just wanted you to understand some of the huge benefits that are there, and also the safeguards in place to make sure that employees wouldn't get into a pickle. And that the county certainly wouldn't have any liability in that situation.
Okay.
Sounds like a lot of confusion and paperwork to me.
So we already opted for that. Now we have to decide if we want to agree to let the difference go to these other, other opportunities that you just described, because that, because that's, that's our option. Legally, correct, Pam?
Right, I mean, to me, it, it was a good decision regardless for you to offer the high deductible health plan. Because in a lot of situations, it has the least amount of risk, and it's a very affordable plan for employees. And so I don't think we need to go backwards on that decision, but really just what we need to move forward on is, you know, are you, do you want to tell them that this year, we're not going to allow the difference in the contribution to go into somebody's HSA account? Or, you know, do you want to, you know, choose a vendor and allow that this year? So that's really kind of what it boils down to, is, you know, I think it's good to offer the HD plan, but what do we want to do about that difference in the contribution?
So Pam, we, as a county, I don't, we don't have to allow them to make HSA payments? Like, they could open up their own account?
They don't.
We don't have to, even though we offer the high deductible plan? We don't have to open up a HSA account?
Right, no, like, for example, let's say that I came to work at Mineral County, and I already had an HSA from a previous employer. And so I wanted to have another high deductible health plan, just because legally, that allows me, because I'm over 55, that allows me to tax shelter $4,600 in a year. And so I might personally want to put my own money in there, and then it would be, you know, an adjustment on my taxes, where if it comes out of your paycheck, it's a, you know, it comes out tax-free. And so the county also doesn't pay taxes on that money. And, but you can offer them, but not...
Administer it.
Not have to, you know, they can set up their own HSA. Or some people will just take the plan, because if you told me you were going to have a major surgery this year, I would tell you that's the best plan option for you, because it has the least amount of risk. And so somebody might want to just take that plan and not ever even start an HSA.
Okay.
Yeah, you were just walking in the room.
The town has a couple of patients.
She made, she said, just because we chose that high deductible doesn't mean that we're obligated to pay the difference. And so, unfortunately, we, I think, the good thing is, I think we only had like one employee choose that. Now I'm just a little bit curious what the employee chose it believing would, would happen. Did that employee choose it just for the lower cost? Or did that employee choose it because they thought we would be contributing to an HSA?
She met with...
She specifically...
Joanne.
Picked it for the HSA.
Okay.
Yeah, she, she personally wanted to max out the family contribution level to be able to cover care that is potentially not covered by the health plan.
And she wants the county to deduct that out of her pay?
Correct. Because it, I mean, the, the thing is, it's pre-tax dollars.
Right.
I mean, that's the huge benefit, is you're saving 25% roughly by taking it out pre-tax.
Well, I think that's where we're at here, is that the commissioners wanted to offer something more affordable for people, but we didn't know that we'd be opening the, the other can of worms of this money and a vendor and HSAs and... I mean, we, I thought that it was always their option, like you said, to do it on their own with the money that they save by not paying a higher premium. I didn't know that we were agreeing to be involved in that, though.
Well, and as far as not paying the higher premium, I mean, no matter what, if they pick the HSA, or if they pick the other plan that's covered in full, they're still not paying premium. And so, I mean, from a county perspective, I mean, the, the other thing that I would share is that typically, utilization is much lower on high deductible participants, because they are far better consumers of care. They're less likely to run to the urgent care and pay $180, or, i.e., pay 20% of that $180 if they're on an RM plan, because that's really not a ton of out-of-pocket versus if they're going to call Wellvia and have a $40 office visit that gets charged to utilization, or if they're going to run to the ER and get a $1,200 payment, or charge. So you typically find that people on HD plans are far better consumers of healthcare.
Right.
Because they feel the pain of having to pay that amount up to the $3,000, if that makes any sense. But, yeah, definitely, I, I understand the...
Hey, let me, let me just back up and clarify. I didn't mean it's cheaper for the employee, because like you pointed out, we pay their premium anyway. What I was referring to was sometimes an employee chooses that HD for their spouse so that they can better afford to have their spouse insured.
Oh.
That's what I was referring to.
True.
That's what I meant.
Yes, that's definitely...
Right.
Or children.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, obviously, we're, we're choosing to pay for the employee's insurance. So that's a, that's a, you know, no-brainer. It's, if they have other options for kids and spouses, what I was looking at.
Yeah, totally understand, Roman. Good point.
Okay.
Do you need any more information from us?
Uh, I don't know, do we?
I don't think so.
Calan says she thinks she's got it. And the other two commissioners believe... Uh, so how about this, has, since we've selected that, has, has it been implemented? Any of this stuff moved, moved ahead, any of the HSA? And have you had to do anything with the money, or...
Well, we don't do that until July 1.
July 1, okay. Okay. How about this, do we, can we, depending on our decision, whether we're going to let the, you know, a vendor handle this, or, or not pay that extra money, or whatever, can we have that opportunity for the employee to revisit their choice? If they know what we may decide on the HSA part of it? Could they change it by July 1?
Yeah.
That one, that one person?
By June 15.
June 15.
Okay. All right. All right, well, well, thanks for your update and information. That's very helpful.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Bye.
See you, guys. Uh-huh, bye.
Have a good day.
So what are you leaning toward? Do you want to do more research on it?
I'm going to talk to Ashley. I think I may just try Maestro this year. And if it, I can even call Pam and ask her if it was bad. I don't want to make it hard on the employee. So if Maestro was difficult to work with on the employer's side or the employee's side, it was the employee, I won't go with her. Because this is new to a lot of people.
Yeah, I think if you do some research, and then we can put it back on the agenda and make a decision, whatever, so...
Cool.
I like the plan.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Always happy to complicate your life.
Well, thank you.
Public comment, is there any comment from the public?